Hello and welcome. My name is Peter Ashton and I am the elected town moderator in Acton. Annual Town Meeting begins in Acton on April 3rd and is the process by which the voters of the town make important decisions on various issues. Town Meeting is an old and honored tradition in New England. While it has changed in many ways over the years, the fundamental principle of democratic government continues today. I am a strong believer in the open Town Meeting form of government. It represents democracy in its purest form where every citizen has an opportunity to voice his or her opinion respectfully and to shape the issues and decisions that the town makes. If you, as a citizen, want to impact what is happening in our community, Town Meeting is the only form of government where every voter can participate directly. In recent years in Acton, attendance at Town Meeting has declined considerably as this graph shows. Whereas in the 1990s, the average attendance was almost 600 voters, in the last seven years, it has dropped to only 350 voters, or less than 3% of all registered voters. When I ask people why they don't attend Town Meeting, typically, the answers are: "It is boring," "The speakers take too long," or "I'm simply too busy." As moderator, I want to make Town Meeting interesting, informative, and interactive while conducting our business as efficiently as possible. Attendance in many other towns is significantly greater as a percentage of registered voters, upwards of 10%. My goal is to increase attendance at Town Meeting and ensure a democratic process. The purpose of this video is to acquaint our citizens with how Town Meeting works, what the rules of the road entail, and some changes that are forthcoming this year, including the use of electronic voting. This is my first year as moderator and I hope you will attend annual Town Meeting and find it interesting. Also, please be patient with me as I fumble along, and please take time to review the warrant so you are prepared to ask questions, engage in debate, and make informed votes. Town Meeting acts as a legislative branch of town government and also considers a wide variety of decisions, including: the type of programs and services that town government offers, the amount that the town will spend on services including police, fire, education and other activities, bylaws and other rules and regulations, and other items that impact the quality of life in town. The warrant is the notice and agenda for Town Meeting and is posted by the Board of Selectmen at least 14 days before the start of Town Meeting in five public places. Here's what the warrant looks like. The warrant is posted on the town website as well and is mailed to each household. It is the responsibility of Town Meeting members to review the warrant ahead of Town Meeting in order to be prepared to discuss and vote on each article. The warrant also includes messages from the Town Manager, the Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the Superintendent of the Regional School System, which provides more information on budgets and other fiscal matters. Other information in the form of handouts is also available as you enter Town Meeting on specially designated tables. I require that the sponsoring organization put its name on the handout so you, the voter, are aware of the source of the information. I'm also encouraging presenters who are using PowerPoint presentations to make them available on the town website several days in advance of the start of Town Meeting. The warrant includes each article that will be voted on at Town Meeting, a summary description of the article and recommendations from the Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the Planning Board where appropriate. It also includes contact information should you have questions about an article in advance of the meeting. Town Meeting cannot legally take any action that is not described in the warrant. Furthermore, Town Meeting votes on a motion, not the article itself. Typically, the motion, which is read to Town Meeting, describes the specific action proposed to be taken under an article. The article merely describes the item under discussion. So, what do I do as moderator? The moderator is elected by the town for a term of one year to preside over Town Meeting. Our Town Charter and bylaws give wide latitude to the moderator. The rules of procedure for Acton Town Meeting come from three sources. One is Massachusetts General Laws. The second is a publication entitled Town Meeting Time. And third is the moderator's judgment and customary practice here in Acton. Town Meeting Time is a handbook of parliamentary law prepared by the Massachusetts Moderators' Association and guides the moderator in the conduct of Town Meeting. The moderator presides over Town Meeting, decides all questions of order, and declares the result of all votes. No one may address Town Meeting without being recognized by the moderator, and all persons shall be silent at the request of the moderator. So, who are some of the other important people at Town Meeting? The Selectmen is a five-person board elected for three-year terms and acts as the executive branch of Town Government. The Selectmen set the time and place for Town Meeting and prepare and issue the warrant. In Acton, the Selectmen take an active role in presenting motions for various articles, such as presenting the town budget, and make recommendations to Town Meeting on most articles. The Finance Committee is a nine-member board appointed by me, the moderator, and their responsibility is to consider any and all municipal questions for the purpose of making reports and recommendations, including, but not limited to, the annual budget and any other matters of a financial nature before Town Meeting. The Finance Committee is also tasked with the preparation of long-range fiscal plans for the town and will make a presentation this year on the state of the town's finances as part of Article 2 before we consider the spending articles at Town Meeting. Town Council is the town's attorney, and he or she provides legal advice and answers questions of a legal nature at Town Meeting. The town clerk keeps the official record of Town Meeting and records all votes of the meeting as declared by the moderator. The Town Manager is the chief operating officer of the town and is appointed by the Selectmen. The Town Manager is responsible for the day-to-day operations and management of the town. The most important participants at Town Meeting are you, the voters, who are responsible for making all decisions on the warrant at Town Meeting. So, now you've decided to come to Town Meeting, how does it work? First, it is important to know where annual Town Meeting takes place. It takes place at the high school auditorium at 36 Charter Road. A map is included in the warrant. The minute van is available to transport you to Town Meeting, and information on the van is also contained in the warrant. Furthermore, babysitting services are provided at Town Meeting, the details of which are included in the warrant. Thus, you have no excuse for not attending Town Meeting. So what is the warrant? The warrant acts as the agenda for Town Meeting, and I will follow the order of articles as contained in the warrant unless someone moves to take up an article out of order. This motion, to take up an article out of order, is debatable and requires a majority vote to pass. There are 37 articles to be dealt with this year. After some introductory remarks, Town Meeting begins its business of considering the articles in the warrant. As moderator, I will read the motion that relates to the article under consideration, identify the mover of the article, and then ask for a second to the motion. You, as a Town Meeting member, can simply say "second" in a loud voice to second a motion, and thus you've made your first mark on Town Meeting. Once a second is received, I recognize the mover who will speak to his or her motion. Presenters, that is the mover, will generally be allowed a maximum of eight minutes to present his or her motion, explaining what is the issue that gives rise to the need for action by Town Meeting, what is the solution, and why you, the mover, are advocating for it, what it will cost and how it will be funded if it is a financial article, and what are the implications if this motion does not pass. If the article is highly complex or involves a very large sum of money, such as the school or town operating budgets, I will allow additional time for the presentation given its overall The Selectmen and the Finance Committee, as well as the Planning Board if it is a zoning matter, will then give its recommendation on the motion. Those making recommendations will have a maximum of two minutes to explain their recommendation. There are timers displayed on the stage of the auditorium which clearly show the time elapsed for a presentation or debate, so everyone knows the amount of time that has elapsed. At this point, debate begins, and Town Meeting members may approach one of the microphones set up in the hall, or if you are unable to go to a microphone, raise your hand and request a mobile mic be brought to you. Typically, we have pro and con microphones set up, so if you wish to speak in favor of a motion, go to one of the pro mics, and if you wish to speak in opposition, go to one of the con mics. If you have a question, it does not matter which mic you approach. I favor pro and con mics, as do many other moderators, because it lends greater order to the debate, plus it helps Town Meeting members decide when debate should be cut off. You may speak only when recognized by the moderator, and once you are recognized by the moderator, state your name and address, and then you may make a brief comment on the motion or ask a question. Please make your comments to the moderator, not to Town Meeting and not to specific Town Meeting members. While you may disagree with a previous speaker's argument, do not attack a previous speaker. Civility is a hallmark of Acton Town Meeting. If you have a question, the moderator will determine who can answer the question, and once an answer is received, I will allow you to make a follow-up statement or ask another question. Speakers are encouraged to be brief, not repeat the comments of others, and are limited to no more than two minutes. Again, timing devices will display the elapsed time. During debate, other motions may be made to the main motion, including amendments. If someone is contemplating amending a motion, the moderator and Town Council request that the amendment be provided in advance of the debate and in writing to ensure its legality and also that it falls within the scope of the article. An amendment is made by approaching a microphone and being recognized by the moderator. Once an amendment is made and seconded, Town Meeting considers the amendment to the main motion first, and after a vote is taken on the amendment, returns to consideration of the main motion or the amended main motion if the amendment has passed. The amendment only requires a majority to pass even if the main motion might require two-thirds. This can be confusing, and I will try to be clear about exactly what we are voting on and what the quantum of the vote is. Another important motion is the motion to cut off debate. If debate has gone on for an extended period of time and is repetitious, or if it appears everyone has made up their mind on the motion, any member of Town Meeting may move to end debate by going to a microphone and stating "I moved to cut off debate," or "I moved the previous question." This motion is not debatable, and if seconded, the motion is voted on immediately and requires a two-thirds affirmative vote to end debate. If a two-thirds vote is in favor, then the meeting proceeds immediately to vote on the motion. If the two-thirds is not obtained, debate on the motion resumes. Please note that one may not speak to a motion to end debate, and it must be the only thing that one can say on that trip to the microphone. Once debate is concluded, I will call for a vote on the motion. A simple majority is required for a passage of a motion unless otherwise specified. Some motions require a two-thirds majority, and I will so indicate before the vote is taken. Votes that require a two-thirds majority include zoning changes, borrowing authorizations, and property acquisition and transfers. For such votes, I will typically use electronic voting so the result is clear to all. On the other hand, I will take a voice vote on motions requiring a simple majority, where I will first ask for votes in favor of the motion and then those who are opposed. I then judge which side had the greater number of votes and declare whether the motion has carried or been defeated. Usually, this is fairly obvious, but if it is close, then we will move to electronic voting. Electronic voting is new this year, and I will discuss it in more detail near the end of this video. In recent years, it has become custom that no new article will be taken up after 10:30 PM unless Town Meeting votes otherwise, which is often done if only a few articles remain before Town Meeting is to be completed. Town Meeting may adjourn following approval of a motion to adjourn which specifies the time, date, and place where Town Meeting will resume. Adjournment does not end Town Meeting, but simply recesses the meeting until the stated time and date in the motion to adjourn. Once all articles have been disposed of, a final motion is made to dissolve Town Meeting. Let me talk about the consent calendar. There are various articles in the warrant that are legally required but are generally routine and non-controversial. These include road acceptances, annual reauthorization of revolving and enterprise accounts, and appropriation of recurring funds such as state highway funding and insurance proceeds. To help streamline Town Meeting, these articles are typically combined into two consent calendar groups: those of a financial nature and those not involving expenditure of funds. The financial consent calendar is handled either just prior to or after consideration of the operating budgets. The non-financial consent calendar is typically taken up near the end of Town Meeting. The consent calendar is initiated by a motion from a member of the Board of Selectmen and includes a series of articles. I will then read each article under the consent calendar, and if two or more Town Meeting members voice an objection and say "hold," that article will be removed from the consent calendar. Once all of the consent articles have been read, a vote is taken on those articles remaining on the consent calendar. There is no debate for these articles. Immediately thereafter, the held articles will be handled in that order. So how should you prepare for Town Meeting? Town staff, town boards, and committees spend considerable time preparing for Town Meeting. In order to make Town Meeting as efficient as possible, it is important that you, the voter, also prepare for the meeting. You should read the warrant completely ahead of time and focus on any articles that may be of specific interest to you. If you have a question ahead of time, contact information is included for each article in the warrant, and you should feel free to contact that person with your question. This year, I will continue the practice of holding a pre-Town Meeting meeting, this year on Thursday, March 30th, at 7:00 PM in Room 204 of Town Hall. The meeting is open to the public, and although its primary purpose is to review the timing related to each article, as well as to review any presentations, it is also a helpful way to learn more about what Town Meeting will be discussing. So now let's turn to the major change at Town Meeting this year. Last fall, at Special Town Meeting, the voters adopted a change in our bylaws which allows the moderator to tabulate votes by electronic technology. As a result, this April, we will implement electronic voting by Town Meeting members. I believe electronic voting has several virtues. First, it is undoubtedly quicker than standing count votes or teller-counted votes, which in recent years have taken as long as 40 minutes to complete. Second, it provides the voter with privacy in terms of their vote. And third, it ensures accuracy in the count of the vote. I have visited and viewed online several Town Meetings that use electronic voting, and it is my impression that it works quite smoothly. It does take a little time to get used to the process, and we will run a few practice votes before we get started each night. There is no doubt that it speeds the vote counting process, but I also recognize that it will take some time this year getting used to this process. So how will it work at Town Meeting in April? When you check in with the clerk's assistants, they will provide you with a clicker. We have two types of clickers. One, shown on the left, is for the visually impaired with Braille and a vibrating mechanism which confirms your vote. The clicker on the right is the one most people will use and includes a display which provides feedback confirming your vote has been received and tallied. The clicker is battery-powered, has an orange on/off button, has several keys numbered A through E, and a display. We will only be using two keys: the A key for a yes vote and the E key at the bottom for a no vote. Because these systems are used for a multitude of purposes, we are unable to find ones which have only two buttons. After you receive your clicker, it will be recorded via a barcode on the back so it can be uniquely identified. You may not, however, keep the clicker overnight, but it will have to be turned in at the end of the evening, and you will be given a new one if Town Meeting continues another night. The clickers are pre-programmed and tested by our IT staff to ensure proper operation, and this will be done before each night of Town Meeting. You should keep the clicker with you in the auditorium at all times and only turn it on when so instructed. If you need to leave the auditorium during the meeting, for example, to use the bathroom, you must bring the clicker with you and have it checked at the door. A clerk will give you a card that you will have to turn back in when you return to the auditorium in order to receive your clicker back. In order to protect the integrity of the voting, you will not be allowed to leave the auditorium unless you turn in your clicker. That is to say, we really don't want you leaving your clicker behind and having someone else vote using your clicker. Once Town Meeting starts, we will run several demonstration votes to give voters a chance to see how it works. Here is the process that we will use when we do vote electronically. When I determine that a vote by electronic means is required, I will announce that we need to take a vote electronically. The motion slide will be put on the screen, the speaker timers will be set to 30 seconds. Then, I will instruct the voters to press the orange power button to turn on their clickers. This slide shows the key buttons for the operation of the clicker. This display will indicate that the power is on. Then I will ask if everyone has their clickers on. If there are difficulties, raise your hand or shout out, and we will have tellers and other audience members, as well as the IT department folks, available to assist. Once everyone has their clickers on and are ready to go, I will state that we are about ready to open the voting for a period of 30 seconds. The timers will be visible, and voters will then have 30 seconds to cast their vote. The system records the last button you press within the 30-second voting window, so you can change your vote while the window is open. You are to press A for "aye" or "nay." Not sure whether you can see these or not, but A is the yes or "aye" button, and E at the bottom is for "nay" or "no." If you wish to abstain, simply do nothing. The clicker will confirm your vote either by a flashing green light and vibration on the Braille clicker here, or with the letter that you have cast and a check mark in the screen on this clicker. If you decide to abstain after casting either a "yea" or "nay" vote, simply push one of the B, C, or D buttons to cancel your vote. We will only be tabulating the A and E votes. If the vote is interrupted during the 30-second window, we will stop the vote, deal with the interruption, and then resume voting. We will not restart the broading process, so if you have already voted, you will not need to do anything else. Finally, at the end of the 30-second voting window, I will announce that the voting window is now closed, the votes will be tallied, and I will announce the result, and it will also appear on the screen in the auditorium so everyone can see the result. The IT department will be running the system, but I will still be required by law to declare the result of the vote. If seven or more people question the result, I will call for a revote. If there is a belief that the electronic devices are not working properly, we can take a teller-counted vote, but of course, this defeats the purpose of having electronic voting. Hopefully, this process will run smoothly after we have taken a few votes. As I said, we will do some practice voting, and on the first evening of Town Meeting, Articles 8 and 10 likely will come up and will require two-thirds majority, so we will certainly use electronic voting for those articles on the first night. You should know that we have taken several steps to ensure the integrity of your vote. The system itself is not connected to the Internet and cannot be hacked. The clickers are all pre-programmed and will have been tested multiple times to ensure they function properly. The pre-programming also prevents anyone from buying their own clicker and bringing it to Town Meeting. The practice sessions will also ensure that all clickers are working and recording votes properly. The feedback display on the clicker and vibration of the Braille clickers ensure that you, the voter, knows that your vote has been recorded by the system. And finally, as I have mentioned, we have instituted policies to ensure that only you can use your clicker. I hope everyone will find this process of electronic voting user-friendly and speedy as well as accurate. For those who do not wish to vote electronically, however, we will have a section in the auditorium reserved for you, and your votes will be tallied by the tellers and then added to the results taken from the electronic vote. As in the past, I will prompt you to stand or raise your card at the time that is appropriate for either a "yea" or "nay" vote. As I've noted, we will still use tellers, both to count votes and also to assist in the use of the clickers. Charlie Cadillac, who is our head teller, is always looking for volunteers to serve as tellers. It is really not an onerous task; in fact, I've done it for several years before becoming moderator. And besides, it gives you an excuse to get up, stretch your legs, engage in some easy math, and walk about in the middle of Town Meeting. So please contact Charlie if you are interested in serving as a teller. I have instituted a few other more minor changes that I hope will also make Town Meeting run efficiently and encourage more debate. These changes come after visiting several other towns' Town Meetings and also meeting with moderators from other towns. First and foremost, I am trying to get as much information regarding Town Meeting on the town website. This includes three publications that I've authored that should help those who attend Town Meeting understand what is going on and those that present at Town Meeting to stay on point. These publications include a guide to Acton's Town Meeting, which reviews many of the points that I made earlier in this presentation but goes into more detail. The second publication is the Moderator's Rules and Parliamentary Procedure for Town Meeting, which is more technical but nevertheless helps one understand the rules by which Town Meeting operates. Finally, I have written a guide to making presentations at Town Meeting, based on my experience and that of others who make presentations on a regular basis. In addition, I am hopeful that all PowerPoint presentations that will be used at Town Meeting will be available on the town website ahead of the meeting. I know some presentations remain a work in progress until nearly the start of Town Meeting, but I also know that many are already done, so it should be no problem to have them on the website so voters can review them, along with the warrant, ahead of the meeting. I also recognize that not everyone is necessarily comfortable approaching a microphone and speaking in front of 500 of your neighbors, but that is the tradition of Town Meeting, and I will try to make it as comfortable for you as possible, especially if you are a newcomer to Town or to Town Meeting. Nevertheless, I intend to hold presenters and speakers to strict time limits. Presenters will be given a maximum of eight minutes except in rare circumstances, and those speaking from microphones on the floor of Town Meeting, as well as those making recommendations, will be limited to two minutes. Many other towns have similar time limits at their Town Meetings, and I believe this will help force people to be concise and clear in the points they wish to make. Many of the motions are included in the warrant. Those that are not will be available on the town website ahead of the meeting and as a handout at the meeting. Another change I hope to make is to begin the second night of Town Meeting at 6:45 PM instead of the customary 7:00 PM. As most of you who attend As most of you who attend town meeting regularly know, there are several recognition awards that are made at the start of the second night of town meeting. To try to facilitate this process and not force us to go quite as late into the night, I think starting a little early on Tuesday evening would help. Finally, we passed another bylaw change last fall that enables town meeting to elect an assistant moderator. We will take up this election as part of Article 1, and the selectmen will nominate Joanne Barry to be the assistant moderator. I have been working with her, and she is prepared to act as moderator should I have to excuse myself or if I have a conflict. Joanne has extensive experience moderating debates and other meetings on behalf of the League of Women Voters, and I have great confidence in her ability to act as a moderator should the need arise. Earlier this year, I held a forum to solicit feedback from voters about improvements and changes they would like to see at town meeting. Some I will institute, such as limiting the time spent on presentations and trying to get as much information before the voter ahead of town meeting. It is, of course, incumbent on you, the voter, to become informed prior to town meeting so votes can be taken efficiently, but I do recognize the need to get more information out into the public prior to the meeting. In the future, I am hopeful to include more information in the warrant itself, such as the rationale for a board’s recommendation, not simply whether they are recommending an article or not. Several towns do this, and I have been told that it greatly streamlines both the presentations and the time devoted to questions and debate. I’m also always interested in what you, the voters, think could be done to improve town meeting within the confines of Massachusetts law. One suggestion I hear repeatedly is why can’t we watch at home and make our votes from home? To answer that, currently, that practice is simply not allowed by Massachusetts law. In any event, I hope that town meeting operates smoothly and that those that do attend find electronic voting a convenient, private, and efficient way to vote. I also hope that we can focus more on debate and less on lengthy presentations to strike an appropriate balance between encouraging more healthy debate and accelerating the pace by which we handle various articles. Thank you, and I hope to see you at annual town meeting on April 3rd.